All right, let's bring that Dune City Council regular session Wednesday, July 22, 2022 order. We have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Mayor Forsyth?
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer?
Present.
Councilor Bob Orr?
Here.
Councilor Alan Montgomery?
Here.
Yay!
Councilor Wells? Councilor Duke Wells?
Here.
Councilor Snow? Councilor Mallon indicated he is serving in jury duty in Eugene. And he indicated that if he can grant jury duty for the last couple of months, that's where he's been. And so if he can make it back, he will come here.
Would you all join me in pledging allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Two second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During the fast, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? I pass it. Announcements, Jamie? Announcements?
This is a type of probable error or misunderstanding between staff.
Okay.
There will be a city council meeting on Wednesday, September 23rd, which is your regular session, at 6:00 PM to consider a conditional use permit to build a guest house on a lot with an existing dwelling.
What's the type?
I'm sorry?
You said, I thought you said it was a typo?
Well, I had it as planning commission and it's actually the city council.
City council.
Planning commission, I guess, has already booked it. I don't know.
Got it. Thank you.
And it's not on the agenda, but we did get a new order from the governor with regard to masks. I'm sure you probably all heard it.
Yep.
Masks and 100 people built inside the building.
Since I input that those things not on the agenda. Thank you. Paul Roberts?
Yes. I just have a follow-up question. Last year, I believe it was, there was a meeting that was held here and there was discussion about lighting throughout Dune City.
Yes.
And I've never really heard or read any consensus that was completed on that.
No, it has not been completed. It still is before the planning commission. One of the planning commissioners has, we're very short of members of the planning commission. And so one of the members had a health issue and surgery that prohibited from coming to meetings for quite a while. And so they haven't had a forum since then, basically. We really need people to come forward to serve on our committee's mission. Thank you.
Linda?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay. Is it Hannah Phillips?
Wanda?
Absolutely, Wanda Phillips.
That's me. I just, hello, everybody. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am on the agenda. I am applying to do water testing for St. Louis
Okay.
and to help out on the planning commission.
Okay, there you go.
My neighbors with Bonnie Allen and she said definitely need people to help. So I said, yeah, I've got the time to help on that. So I just wanted to come in and say hi.
Excellent. Always need volunteers. Thank you very much, Paula. All right. Full business. Now we're entering into a public hearing. So we'll close the break, redo, close the regular session and do the left right. Close the regular session at 6:06 and enter into a public hearing. This hearing will be held in accordance with the procedures required by the city and state of Oregon. Staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria and code provisions which have been listed in the staff report. There are criteria this council must use in making this decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards this criteria or other criteria which you believe apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement of evidence sufficient to afford the city and parties involved an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude and apply to the Oregon land use board of appeals with regard to Title 15 violations. Which regard to all, with regard to all of the city code violations, the city council's decision is final. The city council will hear all Title 15 violations in its capacity as the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals shall hear and determine the appeal of the basic of the appellants, written statement, and any additional evidence the Board of Appeals deems appropriate at the hearing. And the appeals may be present testimony in an oral argument personally or by council. The burden of proof shall be on the building office and the code enforcement officer. The rules of evidence used by courts of law do not apply. The council in its capacity of Board of Appeals shall issue a writ decision within 10 days of the hearing date. Any interest, the party to this action may challenge the qualifications of any counselor or participant in such hearing decisions. Such challenge must state facts relied upon by the party relating to the council's bias, prejudgment, conflict of interest, or other facts from which the challenging party has concluded that the counselor will not make a decision in impartial manner. To any of, any party to this action wish to challenge any counselor's impartiality? Does any counselor wish to declare conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contact? This matter is before us this evening to consider the appeals of Andy and Megan K., is it Sherman?
Yep.
And Terry W. Dumond, doing business as Dumond Inc., an organ corporation of findings and fact conclusions of law and order entered June 26, 2020 for violations of Dune City code provisions as follows. As to the sheriffs? Sherman?
Sherman.
Sherman. Sorry. Section 90 dot 01D failing to obtain a permit from the city to approach upon the city's right-of-way to be considered on appeal by the city council. Section 92 dot 032 and...
Oops, sorry.
Yep. And 93 dot 003 failing to obtain a permit from Dune City for excavation and grading to be considered by, on appeal by the city council. Section 141 dot 003 failing to submit an erosion and sediment control plan for the approval and consideration of the city prior to any land disturbance to be considered on appeal by the council. Section 155 dot 3 dot 1 dot 2H violating the limitation of number of access points permitted per single family dwelling to be considered on appeal by the city council in its capacity as Board of Appeals. As to Mr. Dumond and Dumond Inc., section 120 dot 15, doing business without a current valid Dune City business license, a violation to be considered on appeal by the city council. Section 90 dot 01D encroaching on the city right-of-way without a permit and violation to be considered by the, on appeal by the city council. Section 155 dot 3 dot 1 dot 2H creating more than one access point to the property from a city right-of-way without first obtaining a permit to do so, a violation to be considered on appeal by the city council in its capacity of Board of Appeals. Sections 92 dot 032 and 93 dot 003 failing to obtain a permit from Dune City for excavating and grading to be considered on appeal by the city council. Sections 141 dot 003 failing to submit an erosion and sediment control plan for approval and consideration by the city prior to any land disturbance to be considered on appeal by the city council. Could we please have a staff report?
Yes. The first thing I want to point out on page two of the staff report, and staff reports have been provided to both of the appellants in this matter as well. So, second paragraph, I've got November 7, 2020. It should have been 2019. I'm sure there aren't other typos, but that's the one that was pointed out.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it? There's no need to read it into the record if all the parties have had an opportunity to review it.
Any of the councilors have any questions of the staff on this staff report?
There is one thing I'd like to clarify.
Sure.
And it has to do with the way things are handled. Title 15 is our land use code. And so when a land use code violation, anything like 155 or any of those where there's a violation, it has to be heard by the Board of Appeals. The city council is named the Board of Appeals for those appeals, for that issue. In this case, there originally were more. And it was a very sticky issue because allegedly the violations occurred, the alleged violations occurred, to clarify that. The alleged violations occurred well before the council repealed Title 151. But the date of my finding and order is the day after it became effective, the appeal became effective. I didn't see any need to argue about it. So that's why my recommendation is to just dismiss those. They have to do with cutting a slope out and leaving it bare, you know, higher than four feet without having any kind of retaining wall or some sort of support, or an engineering report to say that it's not going to collapse and harm somebody and that it's safe. And those have been changed to a different form of language in another location that doesn't specify the slopes. It just says that you cannot do work on any ground that has a 15% slope. And in this case, they created a slope bigger than 15%. So I didn't see any, because it's pretty confusing. So we just dropped those. And that's what was reflected in what you heard the mayor just read. And that's what's reflected in this report, is that change. Other than that, if you have any questions, let me know.
And in the report, in the report we just read off, which is saying that you left off a moment about the cutting the slope back, correct, we read in the staff report?
Yeah, but those were all Title 151, I mean, they were Title 15.
Right.
But they were Chapter 151 violations. And Chapter 151 was repealed when we adopted the new building regulations. Chapter 92 and 93.
Excellent. Okay. So the staff or council doesn't have any questions right now? Then we'll take testimony from...
All right. So we're here to present testimony on evidence appealing violation from a pond last June period, 2020. We ask to be overturned based on testimony and evidence presented. We also ask that all fees be refunded. We ask violation 90.01 and 155.31 be overturned. We also would like to correct, or like corrective actions two and four from the final order to be overturned. The second driveway access point in question is a pre-existing driveway. It should be grandfathered in. We have two letters of confirmation of previous owners and neighbors in the neighborhood stating that it is a pre-existing driveway. It's been there since the, it was actually a cat road for when they developed Levent Loop. So it's always been there. And there was also a section, about 40 by 40, flat spot, parking lot, whatever they want. There prior to when we bought the house. We also are addressing violations 92.31 and 93, sorry, 93.001 and 141.03. We have, we have the excavation and grading permit filled out and payment, but according to the expectations we, or sorry, the exceptions to the erosion and sediment control, we are in compliance of that.
So we have, we have the letters from Bill Pinkney and one from Rosie Nicholson. We have copies, so we can get those to you guys. We, we did not intentionally do anything, that we did not want to go beyond our bounds or anything. We appreciate the consideration of us coming in here and making things right. And we want to just move forward from this. Did you want us to read the letters from them or do not read it?
That's okay, just give us the, Jamie?
Okay.
Jamie, I want you for the picture of the existing second driveway. Is that the one that we have?
I want, right, the gray big.
Right.
The hard part was trying to find pictures prior to the purchase of the home showing the access point and the slope.
Primarily because everything's on portrait. Andy, you were, you had mentioned 90.01?
I think he meant 92.0.
Oh, 92.0, okay.
Oh, 90.01. And, I see what it's...
If you turn to exhibit six, there's a list up at the top of the page.
Oh, exhibit nine.
It's easier to find.
Oh, I see. Good.
It doesn't have the new ones, but these are the old ones.
And Jamie, it's just Andy's correct that they had made payment on 141 dot 002.
That they have what?
They had, I wrote down that they had made...
We've not made it and we have payment for that.
Oh, well, you have there.
Yes, we have.
Okay, got it. Yeah, the secondary access point released from the pictures looks fairly old. I said that the pictures of the secondary access point or the driveway doesn't look like it's old in nature. It doesn't look like it's brand new anyway. So I didn't understand, trying to find it.
I need testimony that I lived out here. I've lived out there for 35 years.
Is that all?
And I've walked by there hundreds of times. And I know Bill Pinkney. And there was an area there. I think the way that it is now
Yes.
with that kind of usage going to be in there as we move forward on this, I think the most important to myself is having a cover put along there between there, some kind of, you know, for the drainage coming off of that. There was always an open area there. It used to have some logs and stuff put in there. Obviously, there's been pretty substantial improvement that too.
Yes.
And that's the picture on here. I'm just going to listen for a while, I guess. No automatic on this side now. I know that there was access point there before I seen it.
For the record, if I may?
Sure.
If a second driveway is approved, then they would need to install the apron that is required, with the cover.
Yes. I went by.
Investigations and stuff.
That's my only thing, I'll do that.
They'd have to give us a second driveway permit.
I see. So I wanted to check my math here. You have to get a permit for excavating over 4,000 square feet, correct?
That's correct.
On page one, example of four, 25 feet from the road and under 60 feet wide gives you 300 square feet. It was already a 40 by 40 area cleared, which is 16 square feet, which leaves your working area of 2,300 square feet. It's significantly under the 4,000. Even the finished cleared area is 300 square feet.
Well, that's the area that I was using, but it's also greater than 15% slope.
Yes. And I have a question on that on the same page. It says there's a seven-foot vertical cut. Is that a seven-foot vertical cut or a seven feet along the cut?
It's vertical.
Vertical. I drove by there the other day, but I hit on a bothering by the way this line. But what the bank was made that firm. So the engineering study that we're talking about requiring, or is there going to be an engineering study required to build the garage? Because you were talking about building a garage.
We're not sure that, until the plans are submitted, we don't even know if there's room on the lot to build the garage. That he'll need setback requirements and all that stuff.
You know what?
But should he? I mean, it would just be a start full permit.
I was just wondering if you could cover the engineering with one, one shot.
Oh, my gosh. Unfortunately, and I've learned this the hard way, a geologist engineer is way different from the kinds who design buildings.
It's very hard to find.
Yes, I can help you with that though, now that I've done my research.
We had one lined out and he went into open heart surgery, so.
Oh, dear.
We're back to square one.
However.
Well, how rude of him.
If you are going to be using the back of the retaining, I mean, you know, if you're going to be putting in a retaining wall on the back of the garage, then that becomes, boy, you don't have to worry about getting a grade.
And that was essentially, we were kind of pausing on the garage. But that is the plan. When and if we decide in the future to actually build the garage, the retaining wall will be built into development.
The structure that...
Yeah. Kind of like an open basement kind of thing, you know?
Yeah. It makes sense to do it. So what are we up to now?
Questions for the Shermonds?
Is that it for Phillips?
I have a question or two if I may. For the Shermonds. First of all, could you just clarify for me? You said you are asking that, you are saying that 90.01, that that encroachment was already there. And you said you have payment for which, which one?
For the pulling...
141 dot 00?
Yes.
The permit...
Excavation and grading permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Any others you're asking, would those be weighted or clarify for me, if you would, what you're asking for the other violations stated here?
So that the other violations be overturned. So the second driveway, because it is pre-existing.
Right.
That it was already there. It was something we didn't create. And also that one's for...
Yeah, this is...
Sorry, I didn't have to look at it. All these numbers.
I know.
I've been doing it for hours upon hours. I quit staring at it. So we took care of the excavation and grading permit. The erosion and sediment control plan, to weigh that because we're in compliance. There's grass and shrubs on the slope that we put on there last year. And so there's grass and shrubs that are watered and built in to help the slope.
Could you also tell me, it looks like, I was kind of going through the time sequence here. And from, according to the, to the staff report here, November 7th, you were emailing excavation grading permit form. And then the next apparent contact here with the city was June 26th, when, and it looked like our permit tech was awaiting paperwork from you all and then nothing happened until June 26th when, or June 20, excuse me, June 30th, when service was, was given from, from the city. What was, what was going on during that period of time?
And I know, by all, I basically, I basically wasn't aware or wasn't clear on what exactly I needed to, you know, fill out on the information for the grading permit. And I kind of just let it go to the wayside, which was not the best thing.
And he also was like, I'm going to put the garage on hold. I don't want to do it right now. We're just going to put it on hold for now. So it just kind of stopped at that.
Mayor, may I have Jaz's one? Comment left at the end of the... Jazz left at the end of that month. And then COVID came along. So the office was closed for a period of time without anybody, and we only recently hired a permit tech this last Monday.
Oh.
So, we're talking about one person in the office during the work of five. Thankfully, Rapunzel refused to take the time off, so she did come in and help.
Okay.
So that's, a lot of the time was not so much just waiting on them, maybe the part with Jazz was, but when Jazz left, she made sure to put this on my desk along with the other stuff that was there.
Okay.
So it's not all his fault.
Thank you. And Jamie, in terms of the access points, one fifty-five point three, point one point two, is that, if, if in fact, the right of way that they, was already there, does that, does that take away the need for one fifty-five? No.
No, it would still be required to get a permit to put the driveway in. It would be up to you as part of your decision to say, yes, they can have that second access permit, but it has to meet code requirements for installation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have what else? Okay. Mr. Duman?
Yes, sir. I, my name is John Duman, I'll be representing anyone who needs today.
Okay.
Standing in for Terry.
Just, you want to give any testimony or?
Uh, yeah, I do. Um, so on my violations, I apologize for not having my business license. I let it lapse for the years we've worked on in and out of Dune City for many years now, and I am at fault for not having my current business license. Moving on to number two. Okay, so getting started. A.J. Serving gave me a call because he, he was attempting to go up and pull giant stumps out of this, out of his backyard from where the area was. He had, he goes, hey, come take a look at this and see, see what it is, and with hand tools and in a small machine that he could use, he wasn't having any luck. He called me out to pull stumps off of this property. From my understanding, it was already a driveway, an access point. I've heard stories of the previous owner always having his wood cutting down there and, and different stuff that the previous owner used to do down in that lot. So I didn't think anything of opening up a new driveway, all of that was, I had no intention of that, and was not aware of this final building that he had planned to put there. From when I received that call, my duty was to go out there, I said, yes, I will help you pull these stumps. I got out there, we pulled a couple stumps. At that time, he had brush piles all over the place. He discussed how to get rid of the brush, burning it come up, and I offered that we could haul it away. So, my intent was to go out there and pull the large stumps in his backyard and remove the brush from the lot. I had no intention of getting it ready for a shop or a second driveway or anything of the sorts. And that goes with my violation, alleged violation of number two. This was not done to build the driveway or a platform for a building in any way. I went out there and I pulled several stumps and removed brush. Violation number three, the mandatory pre-construction. I wasn't constructing anything. These are large spruce stumps, spruce and fir stumps. When I pulled those out of the ground, they leave ten foot deep, fifteen feet wide holes. So, I wasn't constructing a platform, I was removing the stumps and then taking the hazard away from having fifteen foot hole. He has children on the property, I didn't want to leave with it at that. For the erosion control plan, I feel like I am exempt from that. Like I said, I removed, I removed less than fifty cubic yards of dirt off of that premises. The majority of the dirt from the stumps just got moved back into the holes, and that's what created the flat, level area there. All of the, the material and the stumps that got pulled away is, is, is what we were busy doing. If you can load up that much huckleberry, rhododendrons and brush, it takes a lot of time and effort to get that stuff removed off of the property. I know, as Mr. Montgomery stated earlier, it is less than four thousand square feet, what I worked on. The slopes that I was performing the work on occurred on a slope less than fifteen percent. Those stumps that I pulled, some of them were on very flat ground, some of them were on moderate ground, but they weren't on a vertical slope or anything like that. That slope on the back edge cut was already there from pulling those stumps out of the ground. I merely just cleaned it up and took those holes away and made it flatter. The property I was working on is more than a hundred horizontal feet from the water source. I feel like I'm, there is a, that. The other allegation is, is someone came forward saying that they saw David Mortier drove by and observed violations. I, I can't be held responsible, I feel, for somebody's observation. I don't have, I believe that is just hearsay. He could have something against me or my company. My concluding thought is, I don't understand why I'm being held at twice the cost for my violations as the, as the other party in this situation. I would be open to questions.
Anybody have questions for John?
Yeah, I do. So it was, it was your belief as you were doing this work that you did not have to have a permit, is that right? For any, any of the work that you were doing?
Yes. I feel A.J. could have performed the same duty that we did if he was out there for months and months with a half different shovel.
Months and months. Been doing that on my own property.
I understand.
I get it.
So you did not change that back slope?
The only thing that changed that back slope was the, the extensive root mass from the stumps that we removed.
And they go for miles.
They do.
John, do you understand that, and Jamie both, your intent was not to build a platform for a new building?
I, I had no, I was not aware of him pulling a permit or asking for one for a building in the future. I saw back there a giant piece of property that has no use for his kids. I thought I was going back there to remove stumps and clear brush for him.
Yeah, I mean, I put in a shop, and I deliberately did it, so there's a whole different set of values that goes along with that versus clearing the debris from the excavation originally and the logging. So I assume what you're saying to us is that that's what you were hired to do, and that's what your intent was to do, is remove stumps, level the, fill the holes back in from doing that and dig away with it?
Yes.
I have another question. There is, there is in here, it's our exhibit eight, to Jamie dated seven, four, twenty. It's just a handwritten note from Terry Dumont, Dumont Incorporated, would like to appeal your order to the council. On here, it says, it stamped paid with check number ninety-three sixty-one. What was that amount and what was that for? Or maybe Jamie?
The city requires a four hundred dollar appeal fee.
Okay.
When someone appeals an order.
Okay, so each of these was that four hundred dollar.
Correct.
And, John, you have not yet taken out or renewed your business license for Dune City, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, are you intending to do that?
I do not intend on, on working in Dune City.
Okay.
The only other thing is, I would bring your attention to the code with regard to erosion, not erosion and sediment control for grading and excavation grading. It refers to material, it doesn't say dirt. So it includes trees and brush, anything that is taken off or brought on or moved around on the property, triggers a grading permit. And had they done the pre-construction appointment, none of this would have happened.
Okay. Pre-construction of, well, pre-grading, that's what it requires, is that you have a pre-grading conference before you move a shovel of dirt, they're supposed to come, let us know what is going on. And that's what I have numerous times told Terry and sent copies of the code and highlighted it for him. So he knew that before he moves any dirt or cuts any trees or any of that stuff, they're supposed to come in and tell us what they're doing, so that we can make a determination. That's what happened on another case that we have all dealt with before, that flooded out the guy's lot. That's why. So, and they ended up in the lawsuit.
Right.
So that's why they're supposed to come in and just talk to us first, that's all we really want, is come in and let us know what's going on, so that we can look at it and make sure that nobody's going to get hurt. And there has been no desire. Mr. Mayor? Please. She's referring to the Montgomery project, which there was permits on.
No, there's not.
You said it flooded out?
No, that's not, that, that's a totally different piece of property altogether.
Well, I think you're bringing something into this discussion that you're not allowed to bring in. We're, we're sitting here looking at this.
You're right.
So, you want to retract that?
I'm just trying to explain to them.
I know, no, you're trying to.
The reason is why we can't start though.
You're trying.
It's because a person got flooded out, has nothing to do with Montgomery. Another person got flooded out.
Did it have something to do with you?
No. It didn't have anything to do with you.
Don't prejudice the council. Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have, is this a time for us to say what we think? Let's see. Did Jamie have?
One more thing before you move on.
Great.
I'm not sure, I heard a request to reimburse the appeals fee from the Dumas. I'm assuming you want to make that request?
Would like to make the request to reimburse, reimburse fee, the appeal, the appeal fee.
Jamie, could, could you remind me, what is the, what is the, the fee for the business license? What would that be for the, for the Dumonts?
It's eighty-five dollars a year.
Eighty-five dollars a year, okay. Okay, and that's not, I just turn back to you for a moment, that's not something that you intend to pay even though you were doing business in Dune City? You said, we don't want to do business here, and you want that to be, to be left without pay, is that right? Am I understanding it correctly?
I feel like that statement is a little harsh. And where I'm moving forward is, I don't intend to work in Dune City. I have a thriving company, I feel like I can use my business elsewhere. The Dune permit, I, it's not, I failed to renew it and pay that eighty-five dollars. If I felt like I needed a Dune permit to do, or a permit to go through the process for the little amount of work that I did out there, I, I would have paid that eighty-five dollars for that.
Could you have a permit for, when was your last in Dune City? Do you know? I don't know. And all of this work was done last year anyway, so if you decided to, uh, move forward, you know, pay one for a few thousand. All of it was done last year, right?
All the council, have all their questions answered?
I have one more for Jamie.
Please.
John brought up a question of feeling like they shouldn't have to pay twice what the Shermonds are being asked to pay. I assume that what you're doing here is reflecting what our code requires. In other words, it's not, there's not intentional here about saying the contractor should pay more than the homeowners, it's simply, this is what, this is spelled out what the code says, is that right?
No, it's because I know that on multiple occasions, I have sent the information to Dumont Incorporated, and they have deliberately refused to comply.
Okay.
Is Terry owed for that?
I'm sorry?
Is there code for that?
No, there is not.
Terry?
I'm not sure what she's talking about, mail me information, as far as what?
Copies of the code.
You have never, you have never mailed me?
Three times.
You have no record of it? You show me a record of it?
I do.
You have no record of it?
Yes, I do.
I'm lost, I have no idea what Jamie's talking about, mailing me something, and it's all I see, and a little late now, but. Okay. I understand. Are we done, councilors? Do either the appellate, wish to make any requirements? I know you want to, you made a request to reimburse for the appeals fee.
They both did.
Did you?
Yes.
Anything else for the, that you guys want to put on the record, either, either party? That you could add?
Just so we're clear, that indeed, he was brought to just do some clearing, as he did, that our garage stuff, because it was in November, that's when we were like, well, we have this space, maybe we should see what we can do with the garage. So that's what it came out with. And indeed, it was a lot of land that was just kind of wasted space, and A.J. started clearing stuff, and it was like, holy cow, there's paradise back here. And so, that's how it all came to what it is.
All right, but you, you have a plan, you just, I mean, you didn't draft any plans, you haven't submitted anything?
Well, at the time of the, when they did the clearing, no.
Right.
No.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the initial was November. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
The other thing is, obviously, anybody that's been around a building would know that the land that the Dumonts cleared over there is not ready for building, it's not that kind of thing, it's dirt with some gravel on it, that's, you know.
Yeah.
Is it, can I say anything?
May I?
I've been on the council a long time, I've always been pro-citizens, pro-property owners to do what they want. I think clearly there have been some violations made here. I don't think they were made on purpose, I think some chains got dropped, like you were saying. As far as the Dumonts know, I've known and seen that work for a long time, I don't think they're fly-by-night, they go in there, they try to do a good job. I think there were some mistakes made mainly, I think, when that went from a drive across where the prior owners had, had their wood in there, to improve to what it was, it needed to be upgraded, as I said at first, with the culvert in there, because now it's an official access point, where before it was just kind of a, it was an improved area, that didn't work in there, that it wasn't gravel level like it is now, but it didn't have that appearance. When it came to that point, there's going to be an official entryway, then we need to upgrade that to have the culvert in, to make sure that's taken care of. You know, I think there have been violations, I don't think there's anything here that we can't take care of and move on with, in both parties. So, that's my feeling on both, I don't think anybody had any intention of doing anything wrong here. I think ball got dropped, and there were some violations, but there's nothing that we can't take care of. That's all.
Thank you. Before we exit the public hearing, are we done? Do you need other statements yet, Terry?
I would just like to add.
I would just like to add, the only thing we've admitted guilt is the lapse of the business license. If you accept that as a grandfathered in area, the rest of our citations, our violations disappear. We had, we had no knowledge of pre-construction. Hell, I had no idea what they were doing. I was called there to remove stumps and brush. I'm gonna leave something looking better when I, when I leave, and that's what my son did.
I think that's clear. I don't care.
I think that's all I wanted to say, dude.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, right now then we'll close the public hearing at six fifty. See if we can get through this part of it. I entertain a motion to drop violations relating to the now repealed sections 151.048B and D recommended in the statute.
Could you say it again, please?
I entertain, I would entertain a motion to drop the violations relating to the now repealed sections 151.048B and D as recommended in the statute. Second.
So moved.
Backwards, everybody. You know what I mean? Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those are dropped. Would now entertain a motion on, or entertain a motion on remaining violations as to any made in... Sir, do you...
And this is just, this first one is just for the Sherbuns, is that right?
Right.
If I might, pick for just a moment?
Yes.
My, my sense here is that there was no intent on the part of the Sherbuns to violate the code. In fact, if I look back at the original dates in here, on November 4th, 2019, this Sherban called the NCA office to find out if he could put another brush on his property. So, it strikes me that the, that the Sherbuns, despite that gap of time, which we talked about a little earlier, it strikes me that, that there was not an intent to violate the, the code. At the same time, recognizing that the old, the old adage, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. So, I'm, I'm rather inclined, as to the Sherbuns, to certainly reduce the fines, if not waive them under the circumstances. But I certainly would like to hear from some of the other council members.
I can agree with reducing some of the fines. A corrective actions order two. This, this isn't a driveway, driveway. I mean, it's a little parking area. It would be difficult to install a blockade or barricade created in use of the driveway to be removed later if you're going to get the permit. I would like to, personally, I think you should be able to not put all the time and effort blocking that if you're going to get a permit to use it later. I think that could be open until three or four happens. You, if four happens and you're denied the permit, then yes, eventually it has to block.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to point out that right now, all you're talking about is the violations, did they occur, did they not? Not the fines or penalties or whatever?
They did.
That'll be done separate in a little bit.
Okay.
So if you were to, for example, move to dismiss everything, then... An option?
So Jamie, we're talking now about what, just?
Just whether or not the violations occurred.
Okay. Well, certainly, we, we, we are led to believe that the, that the violation of the actual access point is, is, that was not a violation, if in fact that was a pre-existing situation. My inclination is that, yes, the other violations occurred. If that's all, all we're saying right now.
Sheldon, you got any input?
I have no problem repealing the violations related to the 151.048 being...
You already did that.
You've already done that.
Correct.
And it doesn't sound to me as though there was any intent to do a violation. And I think that if we allow people to learn from their mistakes without penalizing them too hard, that that's probably a better educational process than slapping them around.
Do, Nathan?
Just kind of what I said. I, I think that there were some violations made, but I don't think there was intent there. I think ball got dropped, and communication may not have been the best between the owners and the folks who were doing the job. But, I'd like to see us move on from this. I'd like to see us, I mean, neighbors in town. And, and, I know, just one side of me thinking, I know that the statute and a lot of work here. I don't want to see that. You know, I do believe there were some violations made. And I don't want to punish folks from what I'm hearing and how it went down. But I do think that, you know, the city did incur some costs here. So, I'm kind of inclined to cut it down in half and see if they're good with that and move on. That's right.
Jamie, does the 90.01, the right-of-way violation relates more to the 155.3.1, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I assume that?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so, in, in my opinion, what we're looking at is 90.01 and 155.3.1.2 having to go in hand-in-hand because they were pre-existing? It would have seemed from the pictures and from the conversation and from Councilman Wells's testimony on those. The excavation and grading permit and erosion and settlement controls. Jamie, are, are these types of things, I'm just getting clarification, so I understand this stuff. If we're, if when, when, for instance, when Mr. Huff did my excavation, when he was, if there was nothing else other than him going up, doing basic logging and pulling out stumps and covering it back up, that's, is that covered under the excavating and grading permit? So that's kind of...
That's covered under the excavating and grading.
So, so falling a tree isn't necessarily, but pulling the stump out and having to fill in, that does fall into that area?
Well, it depends on how materially it disturbed.
Okay, but I mean, the falling of the tree is not necessarily the issue. It's the grade level, the pulling of the stones.
Right, and the removal of material.
Right, okay. And then, the erosion and settlement comes after that because we could have an area that was logged and, and not done correctly and it can erode and fall down. So, those two kind of fall into the same arena then?
They alter, as a matter of fact, except for the driveway permit and business license.
Yeah, exactly, got it. Thank you for, that was my clarification. All right, so, I think we all agree that all four of these, as far as the Sherbuns area, did occur. But we're just talking about whether they occurred or didn't occur right now.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, if, if I may?
Yes?
If they occurred to the extent that it should be declared as a violation?
Oh, okay.
My opinion is that 90.01 and 155.3.1.2 don't apply in the Sherbuns case simply because of pre-existing or intent. Intent was not to build. Intent was to, you know, clean up the property and make it usable.
The key word in that is installed. They approved it. But this is installed?
Right.
I agree with you.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion that 92.032 and section 141.003 was the only clear violation when it comes to the Sherbuns.
Sherbuns. I, well, so moved.
Do we have a second? Was our motion made?
Yes.
A second. Uh, any further discussion on this? Go ahead.
There's so many numbers here. Double check, right? 92.003 is, or excavation? That's the...
Excavation and grading.
Okay. Without a permit?
Right.
Okay. And the other number is...
Well, it's 141, which is basically the erosion and settlement control.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And do you love?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any... Hearing none, thank you very much. So, we're dealing with them.
Juan, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Rocco.
Oh, Rocco. Go ahead. I'm, here's a ten, guys.
I'll pick Rocco.
Go ahead.
Charlie Meyer?
Aye.
Bob Ward?
Aye.
Duke Booth?
Aye.
Ellen Garland?
Aye.
Susan Stell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Now entertain a motion on the remaining violation. I agree with that. Do we not make a resolution against...
That was the, the motion on the remaining violations as to the Sherbuns.
Agreed.
We get the fines later.
All right, that's what I was looking, I'm going down the road here.
You can do it either way. If you want to flip the fines and do them one at a time, that's fine too.
Yeah, I think, I would like, while we're sitting here and talking about the Sherbuns, I'd like to just go ahead and talk about the extent of what we believe those violations are. So if we're only looking at 92.032 and 141.003, these are both...
Regular code violations, so not more than five hundred dollars.
Right. Myself, I find it difficult to, only because of, you know, I only moved here eleven years ago. So, I find it difficult myself to predict that if I were, you know, moved into the area and I needed my back lot cleared up and got some trees and make it usable, I would not have thought to myself that I needed to get a permit to false some trees and have a company pull the stumps. Now, that might, might be naive, but you know, there was not a lot of trees in San Diego to pull the stumps. So, and I don't know where the Sherbuns are from or how long you've been around. But, while, it just, I, it just, I find it hard to hold them too accountable for something that isn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't be a reasonable thought to a logical person not growing up in this area.
And, and just to clarify, they, they moved here on March 9th of 2018. So it hasn't been, and they began this, they're doing this a year, two, a year and a half later.
So, I would like to make...
I'm gonna have some to that.
Please.
Being very familiar with that property, without them knowing or having a plan, they did a good job of controlling the bank. It is planted with grass. It's got shrubs on it. The slope of the gravel part is such, you know, going back to my concern. For the culvert being in there, it's not so much off of their property. It's the way that slopes down the whole road. You see, coming down there, it, I think, you know, it is planted, and there are shrubs on it. I don't think there's real any imminent danger of any erosion debris getting off that property. If you don't want to talk to me. Jamie, what would the normal fees be for the permits that they did not get?
For?
Erosion control and excavation grading.
Um, I can't recall the erosion control off the top of my head. Excavation and grading, if it is less than five dump truck loads, is twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. Okay.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we fine the Sherbuns for half of the amount that the city had to spend to process this matter, and that would be two hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll second that. How much was that in total?
Two thirty.
Two hundred and thirty dollars.
Cities, yeah, your estimate, Jamie, was that the time and the, and the, and the cost of the work that you did on this was, it was four hundred and sixty dollars, is that, was that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the motion is to reduce that down to two hundred and thirty dollars?
And how does that relate to the, I mean, so we're saying then that we would not fine them for not having the permits? Are we saying, though, that they would still need to take them out? Or are we saying this is in the past and it's too late for that?
My, my thought is that this is, this is a done deal. They're not really folded within, at this point in time, with any other construction. It's two hundred and thirty bucks for, you know...
I think they understand that they're gonna build a building, they need to come down here, do it out there.
Yeah.
There'll be still need a culvert there, no matter what. Yeah, I think we need, way up there. So that is one of the remedial actions.
Is there a size recommendation on the culvert?
Yeah, we have designs.
Okay. May, may I just add, and, and, and I'm sure that we, I think we probably all have the same sentiment, is that every one of these cases is an individual situation. And if we waive the fines other than that two hundred and thirty dollars, in this case, that does not, in any way, prejudice whatever may take place on someone else's property in the future.
I think to me, it's intent.
Right.
You know, it goes back to that. If I thought they were trying to slice up by, I would, you know, wouldn't be feeling that pain.
Um, also, I would point out that they would need to get a driveway, a driveway permit.
They would?
A driveway permit.
Still need that.
Yes, they still need that. Right.
Any further discussion? Motion has been made. Rocco? Can you say your motion one more time?
Yes, that the, we would charge the Sherbuns two hundred and thirty dollars to help pay for the processing of this matter and dropping any of the other clients.
to help pay for the processing of this matter and dropping any of the other clients.
Instead of all the different areas, sort of, for, uh...
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
I just have a question.
Again.
I just have a question.
Oh, okay.
We're still saying though they're in violation of ninety-two point zero three two and one forty-one dot zero zero three, is that correct?
Yes, we said that those were violations, but we're not going to...
Okay, with the part of the motion that those were still violations, and that's what I wanted to make clear.
Absolutely, they're still violations, but it's all, it'll be all processed through the two hundred and thirty dollars.
I just wanted to part of the motion.
Yeah. Rocco.
Councilor Meyer.
Aye.
Councilor Montgomery, don't worry.
Aye.
Councilor Snow.
Aye.
Councilor Orr.
Aye.
Councilor Wells.
Aye.
Oh, and one other thing you would need, if you're gonna do them one person, one group at a time?
Right, yeah, that's what I'm trying to, yeah.
Okay, yeah, jump down to the, the consideration for reimbursing them the four hundred dollars.
Okay, so, yeah, now we're down to, their, their request to be reimbursed for the four hundred dollar...
I'm keeping the motion that we reimburse them.
Second. Discussion on that? All in favor? I, I, Rocco, wait a second. Do we roll call on that?
No, you don't need to.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes. I have to get it. All right, I would, uh, now look into, uh, duty and deed on what we consider their violations. I would like to make a motion that we fine them, uh, the two hundred and thirty dollars. We gotta, we gotta first consider whether or not these, we agree they're violations. Well, I think we already agreed they're violations. Uh, no, that was for the Sherbuns. That was for the Sherbuns, now it's for duty and deed. Well, I, I think that we, and I thought we talked about enough, that they were violations. I just, once again, I don't feel that we need to over the penalize them, and, uh, I would make a recommendation that they be considered violations, and that we, uh, collect the two hundred and thirty dollars for the half the amount of, of processing this endeavor.
So, we first, we first need, I, I assume, a motion as to whether there were violations that, that they, um...
Yeah.
That they are responsible for.
Right.
You know? And those would be specifically, um...
One twenty, ninety, one fifty-five, ninety-two, and one forty-four.
Okay.
One twenty dot, one twenty dot one five is obvious, that's the business license.
Yeah.
And then, the other ones are the, uh, encroaching upon, uh, city right away, which, I think we consider as pre-existing.
Right.
Uh, creating access point was pre-existing, at least two as far as we can tell from testimonies.
Uh-huh.
So, that kind of brings us down to the same thing as ninety-two, which is excavation and grading permit, and one forty-four erosion is settlement control.
After listening to testimony from the landowners and their communication with the Dumas, the only thing I can see that they possibly did, the Dumas did wrong, is they did have the business license. Uh, the communication between the owners and Dumas, the purpose of going over and clearing stumps and moving some brush, and when they had the holes from the, or the stump came out, they regraded that, cleaned that up, and then brought in gravel. Uh, I, to me, kind of knowing, boy, these, the violations against them, I, I, I don't think they're aware of what was, it was, they didn't know of any intent to build on this thing, certainly hasn't finished to a buildable area. Listening to the testimony, he went over there to help the land, the property owners, removed some stumps, and he cleaned up afterwards. From my knowledge of what it looked like before to what it looks like now, it's vastly improved, but there wasn't that much dirt moved around, especially after the stumps got out of there. Uh, and, and, uh, back to what I was saying, the slope is planted, I don't think there is a need right now to go into the, you know, fifteen percent grade and all of that business. I don't, I don't believe, I'm not a geotech, I don't believe that there's gonna be any erosion filtering into the lake at all, let, let owner onto the property, I don't think that's gonna leave your property, in my opinion. But, uh, I think the Dumas were just going over there doing a, a job, you know, permission I got from you folks in the beginning, and that wasn't related to them. I don't, uh, I didn't have this exact thought when I came in here, but after listening to the testimony that brought it out, I don't, I don't see where the Dumas have, uh, done anything wrong.
Okay.
Councilor Wells, do you, we, we found the, that there was a violation as far as the Sherbuns are concerned with ninety-two point oh three two and one forty-one, um, those being, uh, failure to get a permit for excavation grading and for erosion settlement control. If we found that for the Sherbuns, are, are you then saying that you did not see that same situation?
Did you convey that to the Dumas, that you had that?
What's that?
The permits and that stuff, were you talking to them about that?
We didn't have, we didn't know we had, need to have.
Right. So, you didn't...
We had no, no, we had no idea we needed permits or anything with what we were doing.
So, the difference, I think, is, yes, it's a violation. Yeah. Then we get into intent and severity and that, but a violation, yeah, it's clearly a violation, so we can vote on the fact that that's the thing, and then we'll talk about whether or not, and what intent was more.
Thanks, that's where, that's where I was trying to get to, I wasn't, I wasn't articulating very well, but yeah.
We're just thinking, you know, we all, we all live here, and it, it, I'm not gonna argue if there was a violation, 'cause I, I think it was, again, it looked back in intent, and how much of a violation was it?
That's, that's...
And it's a testament of testimony.
That's where I'm at. Okay. So, voting on the violation point of it, period. Can we agree that one twenty dot one five, which is the business permit, ninety-two dot zero three two, which is the, uh, excavating and grading, and one forty-one dot zero zero three for erosion settlement, those are violations, we'll talk about the severity here and then. So, can we all agree through a motion that those are, that is, that we're agreeing that those are actual violations?
If, if you want a motion, I will move that.
Okay, that's, we have to have it. Uh, roll call, vote. Jamie, we hear it.
Yeah, it does have to be a roll call vote.
All right.
Um, Councilor Meyer.
Aye.
Councilor Orr.
Aye.
Councilor Montgomery.
Aye.
Councilor Wells.
No.
Good.
And Councilor Snow. Susan, vote.
Yeah. I can hardly hear you when you speak.
Check her.
Okay, good, all right. Thank you. All right.
Now, typically, you're not having a, a business license.
Yes.
Yes, and those are, those three. All right, now, now we're talking about the, the severity and any penalties that are involved, and I think that's where you were going to, 'cause this is...
Yeah.
All right.
I would like to share a little different perspective from Councilor Wells, and that is that the Dumas are contractors and have presumably been doing business in this area for a long time, um, and, um, whether or not the communications, I don't know what happened, but I, I, um, I'm sure, if Jamie says that she did send out notifications or code, um, uh, information, that those were indeed sent, um, and it would, it strikes me that a contractor should know, um, when is the right time to contact the city and find out if a permit is required, certainly the business license, you've already agreed, should have been taken out. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm simply saying that, um, I think, um, these violations should not necessarily be dismissed without some consideration of the fact that we're dealing, on the one hand, with a family that moved here, um, two years ago, and on the other hand, with contractors who've been, who've been doing this business for quite a number of years. I don't, I don't, I haven't formulated an answer to that, uh, beyond what I've just said, but I'm working on it.
I think, for me, what it is, knowing what they do, and there are triggers that would make them think, I need something, this being such a small job, I don't think that that triggered their thought, that, you know, they had need to get a permit for this, I'm not building a road, or, you know, doing a big job, it's not that big a job for them, so...
And it's not necessarily a site present for a garage or anything, it's...
No. And we need to change that vote.
Yeah. Which, we...
This is certainly happening now.
Yeah, exactly. Other, other thoughts on the topic?
Just as an aside, thinking about how you started hand digging these stumps out, that even that would trigger the need for a excavated permit, digging that many stumps by hand.
The way I can all read...
And that makes my back hurt, even thinking about it.
Make it very hard.
Yeah. Well, at very least, we've got the, uh, no business license. Should we refund our dollars? I think you can't just set the precedent with half of the cost for the city, but I think that would be fair. Very big motion for two hundred and thirty dollars. As a fine or a fee.
And when, what is your, if, if, if you're proposing that, what's your, what's your, you mentioned business license, you're saying two hundred and thirty dollars for half of the costs the city has heard, and?
No, no. That's rolled into...
I see.
I was just referring that to do, uh, a hundred dollars, maybe eighty-five bucks. He knew that beforehand, it should cost fifteen dollars.
The cost of the city included service fees and postage and mailing and copies, it did not include staff, I, I just can't, it is part of my job.
Right.
So, it was actual cost that we incurred.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on it? So, your motion is to...
Uh, fine the two hundred and thirty dollars.
All right, and what about, and then separately, what is your thought on reimbursing the four hundred dollars for the appeal process?
Rebuild it, yes, give that back.
Okay. Discussion on that motion? The only thing that I would add to that is, um, I thought you started off by saying that they should have well known that they needed to have a license, and that you had suggested a hundred dollar fine for that, and I thought then you were gonna have the two thirty for half of the other, uh, for, uh, the work, um, that the staff had to do, and, and then repeal the fine for, uh, having to apply, get to this whole thing, but, so it'll be three thirty, in my estimation.
Uh, that's not what I meant, sorry, I just said three thirty. Welcome, make your own motion.
Well, that'd be my motion. Half of the, of the total cost of, of the mailings and all that sort of stuff, so two hundred and thirty dollars, and then as a business, not having, uh, a license, I think should cost a hundred dollars. And then I would also, if, it needs to be as in the same motion, uh, to refund their money to have this thing earned. Mayor, a second on that motion? No second on that motion?
Did we have a second on, Councilor Montgomery's?
Uh, yes.
No, we did not. We didn't have a second on his, we have another motion here for three hundred and thirty dollars.
So, we don't have a second on either one?
Correct. Okay, anybody other? That, that motion fails? So, what do you, have any other ideas somewhere in between?
I, I think the, I agree they did have the business license, but it should be the cost of the business license. I, I'm wanting to go to eighty-five, not the hundred.
Doing business, recall, a business license, usually what is required is double the business license fee, but that is if they intend to renew it, so...
And, and I don't think they do, but, um, so what I, I had written down was three hundred and fifteen.
Okay. I hear a second on that one. Councilor McDonald. Further discussion on that? You mean that two hundred and thirty plus the eighty-five, three hundred and fifteen dollars? All in favor of that? Without you chose.
That was aye.
Aye. And Susan, how about you?
Aye.
Aye. Duke?
No.
Alan?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
So, that passes three, two. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
And it was reimbursed, the appeal fee, right?
Right. All right, thank you. So, let's see, this time is seven, oh, wait a minute, we're in our normal session.
It's a very helping session.
Yeah, it's still a session. New business. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Terry? John?
Thank you.
Terry, John, I'd like to mention something. Um, I really would, uh, we're, we're in a process now in the city for where we are putting together a group of people, uh, that are business people in the city, to try to determine how, uh, we can increase city revenue without taxes or fees. And I would really like, and when we put that exact meeting together, we've already talked to our legal counsel, and we're gonna bring a group of business people together to talk about how to do that to keep our city a city and not revert back to the county in the next three to five years because of our shrinking budget. Um, I'm not in favor of increased fees and increased taxes, because it's just, to me, I, I just don't believe that. So, I, we're putting this meeting together, hopefully the Olsons and the Beldmans and people that are, that have businesses and has done business like we have for many years on various fronts. I'd really like to get the town hall meeting together with you folks and sit down and say, let's have some ideas for this city on how we can... let's have some ideas for this city on how we can raise, how we can generate income that isn't taxation, or isn't additional fees, you know, weird things. We could buy a house and turn it into a rental and get fees off of that, buy a grocery store and turn it into a profit pension, whatever wild ideas we can, and I'd really like your input into that, I would really like to see you reconsider continue doing business in this city, because I, I value your, you and I have a history, I know what your history was, is in business, and I'd really like your input on some of this stuff. So if you get an invitation, I'd really like you to consider coming in and sitting in and give us, you know, give us your ideas.
I appreciate that, and I'm not like the Shermonds, I've lived here for 62 years.
Right.
I did not go, and I just want to say, Mr. Orr, I didn't know my license had expired. We get busy, I've got a city affords business license, I have a city here, it's not like, oh, we don't have it, to hell with it, let's go. No, we went in there...
Appreciate that.
Uh, to do a favor for AJ, less than 50 cubic yards, not a problem, John, go get them, get stumps in the brush out there, make it look prettier when we're done, that was our intent, thank you, you were very fair of me. So, and I would be very interested in that, like I said, 62 years here invested, I don't want to see the city go back to county. I've always said before, we have local rule here, we control what happens in our neighborhoods, whether it's safety systems on down the line, building permits.
I believe that this happened in Lane County, this wouldn't have had the same outcome.
And I believe that too, you, and I think you...
You do the job.
But we're not here to destroy the neighborhood.
No, no, make it better.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, folks. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, agreement was city engineering services.
I think I put that in your packet.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember from last time, did you have it? But it's not matter, it was just me and the...
You had a question, and then corrected it.
Okay, good, all right.
There is a termination clause now, there was no termination clause.
Excellent, thank you, that's what I said. So other than that, I would entertain a motion to have Jamie sign that agreement. So, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Wanda Phillips, thank you for sending it through.
You're very welcome, I look very interested.
Wanda, as she mentioned before, is here requesting appointment to the water testers of Silcoos Lake.
I'm a little terrible.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wanda, you're approved.
Comes up. She wants to go to planning commission.
And now she wants to stay on the planning commission.
That was Bonnie Allen's.
Oh, okay. She twisted your...
I'm going to give you her kudos for that.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Please.
I'll move that Wanda Phillips be appointed to the planning commission.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Go ahead, Orr.
Yes, go ahead.
May I ask that Counselor Orr please add to the motion for the term expiring 112/2022?
Please add to my motion?
Yep.
For the term expiring 112/2022.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very none that asked. No executive session, man. Good, good of the order.
Yes.
Allen?
I've really enjoyed my time here, boy, it's a lot of time out of my schedule, I'm going to have to vague off with whatever. I was hoping to make it closer to the election, and you could elect somebody instead of going through the whole appointment process. How would that work, Jamie, if I could continue until the elections only come upon us?
That would be fine.
Okay, good, because my term doesn't end this, this year, would you put the general that I needed in the coming months?
Did I give you a packet?
Yes, you did.
When your term doesn't end this year, then I shouldn't have given you a packet?
I didn't think so.
Were you on the last ballot, general election ballot?
No.
No.
Then your term ends.
Oh, it does end, okay, well, that's easy then.
Okay.
Sorry.
But what you're telling me is not to expect you to turn that thing in, right?
Yes, that is correct, please somebody fill in for me, I'm just, I'm trying to move, I'm trying to start a logging project.
And that means all the rest of you, we're looking for another member for the council. Throw that out there?
Well, I'm saying that, you know, Wanda appears to have a lot of time left.
Too much right now, especially with this COVID thing going on, I know. I'm not there yet.
Oh, okay, well, you know.
Sheldon, have you thought about taking two seats on the council?
Just because I'm like Orr?
May I, may I say for the good of the order?
Please.
First of all, Allen, we thank you obviously for your service, and sorry to see you go, but understand the needs to move on with your projects.
Sorry for not having filled all the seats I was supposed to.
Well, we appreciate the time you've been here, and it's been a pleasure working with you. I also wanted to say thanks to Jamie for wearing, how many hats were you wearing there for a while, four, five?
All of them.
All of them. I love it, thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you, James. Great job.
Well, I do have something for go to the order when you're done.
Okay. Duke?
Yeah?
Susan?
On the dais, or any packets, or where you are, wherever you are, there was a letter from Mrs. Leach, and replied to the comments made by Mr. Boma. And so I just wanted, she wanted that read and do the record, but since we have a copy of it, we can include it in the record.
Got it. Appreciate it. So, so done? So?
Let's see, all right, I got one more tonight, that means I have two. So I'll get this to Susan, because she doesn't think she's ever seen it before, and you may not have either, you may have been wanted too that night, yeah.
I didn't know I had any mail.
Well, this wasn't mail, I handed it out.
Who handed it out?
And, and so, anyway, so I'll just make sure that you guys get it, this is, is it Lane Council of Governors, yeah, no, it's League of Oregon Cities, League of Oregon Cities survey on what issues we want, we want them to work on in the coming legislative session, so, I need to get this in, and so I'm trying to make sure that I have more than two people's opinion. Other than that, I think that is all I have in here, other than I will tell you that the air conditioning and heating unit went out, and it is $9,625 for replacement, I did not budget for that in our budget, so that will suffer until, which, you know, in the winter time must be better, hopefully, right now it's kind of warm. I'm trying to figure out what happens.
Been deemed non-reparable, and then you saw it did?
Yes, yeah, it, something broke, and something's going everywhere, can't hold anything, and...
Yeah. See, that one comes out.
May I ask, before we close, what is the status, we had that meeting last week on the rental situation, what's the status of that now, where do we go from here?
Jamie has to find some time to fit together and combine all the ideas, I think before I used the City of Seaside as an example, I think I will find a different one to work with and try another stout at it, and then we'll schedule another appointment.
We had an ad hoc meeting planned, or talked about doing an ad hoc, and then...
We had one.
Yeah. Yeah, we had it on the phone, and then we, we told everybody we would gather all the points that people made, put it into another proposal, have another conversation to make sure that we hit everything before we go ahead and vote on, make it a resolution. Okay, anything else before? Thank you all for working civil, do you have something, sir?
I'm just going to ask a yes or no question to the council, is this the proper venue setting for me to make my personal opinion known on my political view? Yes or no?
A local issue?
No. Yes or no?
I don't think so, but it's not a local issue.
Probably during public comment at all.
Yeah, that's true.
And why would you allow one of your members to wear a shirt like that? Isn't that what he's doing?
I don't know, what's it say? Yeah, you know, true.
Well, I just want to know, is that proper?
Probably should not, I agree with you.
You know, if we're made to wear masks, someone shouldn't be allowed to wear something like that in a public hearing like this.
Got it, no, I agree with you.
Because we can discuss that all night.
No, we can't.
Yes, we can.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't want to say that, but I'm only like, except for the motion to return, I think the motion to return.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you, Wanda.